And we do have a quorum present. We didn't ask, would you like to read the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The Tulsa Midway Independent School District Board mission statement. Tulsa Midway Independent School District educates every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
Thank you, Kim. Our first item is public comment section. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we begin, I will remind audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comments as found in board policy B E D law. Because this is not a regular board meeting, public comments are available to members of the public who wish to address a meeting item or limited to discussion of items on tonight's agenda. Anyone who wants to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting unless the agenda item subject they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Any public testimony speaker who is speaking to a translator will receive five minutes to address the board. If you have signed up for an item not on tonight's agenda or being spoken of on a non-agenda item, you will be disqualified from speaking at tonight's meeting and may speak in the next regular board meeting or anytime the subject is listed on a board meeting agenda. The public addressing tonight's agenda items allows all speakers who have signed up before the start of the meeting to address the board regarding an item on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Last, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own child. Yelling inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. I also caution you that your public comments should not complain about individual school employees by name or position or anyone other than your own child. Identify students pursuant to Texas government code 551.074, 551.0821, and 551.082. As presiding officer, I'm obligated to determine whether a person addressing the board has attempted to administratively resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the board that involve district officers or employees. In the event your comment and the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or charge against any employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school's district's formal grievance proceedings or have the item heard in an executive session depending upon the nature of the complaint. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process, which can be found online, including policies DGBA, FNG, and GF. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration officer in the central administration office. Thank you. And our first speaker is Mia McCall.
My name is Mia McCall, and today I'm going to be speaking on item one. So I was wondering if you all could include a golf simulator into the budget. It's only .001% of the budget, so yes, I would really appreciate that. I've been playing golf since I was a freshman in high school. I'm currently going to be a senior when school starts back up. I just got back from my golf tournament, and I did pretty good. I shot an 82, so okay. But I was talking to the ray coach there as we were scoring, and she was telling me how they're putting a putting green in their school. And I think that's pretty cool, too, but I'm just focused on the golf simulator right now. But I was also talking to the vets coach, and she was saying how they also have a golf simulator and that like most of the schools, including vets and ray, both have, they have a golf class. So basically, like their eighth period, they go to Gable's Honor, whatever course they use as their home course, and they practice there until like, as like a period, you know, like a golf class. And TM does not have a golf class or any tools at all to like fun, and I just, I really do want a golf simulator. And I play in SCPGA, like I practice all the time for golf, and I just feel like it would be more of a fair chance for me to have that practice because during like daylight savings and stuff, I barely get any time to play or practice at all. So and like very cold and rainy days, those are, those are really bad. And it would just be amazing to just stay inside and practice golf here at the school or whatever. I think last year or this year at the very beginning, we have a membership at River Hills. That's our home course. But I don't think that the school board like funded it in time, so we couldn't like practice there. I had to play like as a member there because we didn't like put the money in in time for golf. So if y'all could consider that .001%, that would just, that would be amazing. Also, golf has gone to, or at least qualified for state for the past 10 years. Like if y'all don't already know, y'all probably know that, though. But yes, so yes, if y'all could consider a golf simulator, they're only $10,000. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peralta. Ms. Belinda Gomez-Ariaga?
Hi, everyone. I want to thank you all for taking the agenda item number one into consideration this evening. As you know, I'm president of the Tulsa Midway All Sports Booster Club, and items like the agenda item number one are what we are all about. We are full of parents of athletes. We are former athletes ourselves. We are people who are from here, who love this school, and want to make sure that we are as well represented on the field by our children, by the surroundings around us, you know? One of the parents put it very well when she said that the outside should match the inside. We have great student athletes who are becoming well-rounded, employable, young adults, and that's not just because of us as their parents, it's because of the coaches, it's because of the teachers, it's because of those of you who support them. And approving a proposal like this is basically putting the black velvet underneath the diamond that is our student athletes. This isn't just about football. This is about track. This is about our cheerleaders having a beautiful and safe place to tumble. This is about outside vendors coming in to use our field. And it's not even about the revenue. I could go on about the residual effects of the revenue that something like this could affect, but it's mostly what matters is the feeling of pride that our student athletes will have when they walk onto that field, whether they're competing in track or whether they're in soccer playoffs, or if it's another team that has borrowed our field to use for their playoffs. All of that is just positive things, and that's what we at the Booster Club have been doing since our inception and we're going to continue to do. I hope that you seriously consider this proposal to the budget, and even if it doesn't pass, we're going to keep doing what we do. It's now that we have this great sense of community, we're going to keep building on it. What you've seen so far from the Booster Club is just the beginning. If any of you all were able to go to our spirit showcase last Thursday night, I know our superintendent was there, Mr. Samaniego, Mr. Benavides was there. There was a tremendous sense of community where people are ready to get back that warrior and Cherokee spirit. And this new stadium, all of these updates could really serve as a beacon. So when people who live away or people even that are here that aren't able to make these events come for homecoming, it's going to be really like a homecoming. They're going to feel that sense of community and pride in Tulsa Midway that I feel in my own alma mater. That's all I want for my children and all of my children's friends. So I just ask on behalf of the Tulsa Midway All Sports Booster Club to seriously consider this budget proposal, and if anything else, do it for the kids. My oldest is a senior. He won't be able to see this, but it will be standing for generations because of what you choose to do today. Thank you.
Now we move into discussion action items. Discuss and consider budget amendments to support athletic facility improvements. Mr. Van Maitre.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to give you two handouts. One is a memo from our chief financial officer, and the other memo, the other document is some history behind our fund balance. And if I could read this, this is from our chief financial officer, Philip Carroll. Reducing the unrestricted general fund balance 5.5 million will not adversely affect the district's first rating. It is estimated that the reduced fund balance will be approximately 4.5 months of general fund operating expenditures, meaning that it will, it will be reduced. Currently, it's $20,968,544. It'll be reduced to $15,468,544, and that exceeds, almost doubles, the recommended fund balance. The other piece of information that I'll also read so that our people can get a sense of where we're at. In school years 14, 15, we had a fund balance of $9,826,261. In 15, 16, it was $7,457,97. In 16, 17, it was $8,999,019. In 17, 18, it was $8,386,875. In 18, 19, it was $15,869,445. In 19, 20, it was $16,922,355. And currently, it is at $20,968,544. We have a master plan initiative that we have begun to roll out, and it consists of short-term and long-term facility improvements. The short-term nature is items such as this that would significantly improve the stadium. We're not talking about a completely new stadium. What we're talking about is artificial turf, track, scoreboard, fencing, new lighting, new press box, and to bring our bleachers up to where they're ADA compatible. Currently, someone in a wheelchair cannot turn the corner to sit in the bleachers. There'll also be funds to do some minor renovations to whether it be a golf simulator, as Mia has proposed. And I have to say, my first time ever in TMISD, Mia found me. And she knew I was the lone finalist, and she was lobbying for that golf simulator at that time. Very, very impressive. There's also some improvements that I feel we can do to tennis, swimming, baseball, and softball. Not at the magnitude of what we're looking at the stadium, but this would give us an opportunity to do some things that we currently haven't done. The long-term issues are with the bond. We had two really good productive focus group meetings this morning and afternoon, actually they were all this afternoon, on an early childhood center and improving our fine arts, band, choir, theater, particularly at the feeder schools. So this is part of that plan to bring our facilities up to the standards that I think you want as well as what the community wants. So having said that, I'll entertain any questions.
One question. What is the timeline? Do you have any idea what the timeline will be?
Well, in really only conversations with one vendor and our athletic director, we would play the football season, and depending on how long that is, we would start immediately turning dirt and doing the track. We may have to, we will have to play soccer in an alternative site, and we will probably have to have a spring track season at one of our neighbor's facilities because I don't think it can be done by track season.
What's important is that we get safety done out there because that, that track is not safe right now.
Right.
At all. Or our athletes.
Because it was done several years ago. I know, I know it's been a long time, and it does need improvements, and I know the stadium does as well. They've got a place for the wheelchairs to move into, but like you say, getting up the ramp to turn that corner with somebody in a wheelchair, you can't really do it, especially if someone's in a powered one. It's almost impossible because that needs to be done. We need to take care of everyone that comes to the game that wants to come to the games. You know, I'm all for that because it's vitally important to upgrades and everything. And what I'm glad to hear is our fund balance is very good, but I'm also glad to hear it won't affect the school first.
Aye, sir.
Which is, which is something that we're proud of around here.
Well, you're 100%.
Yes.
It's the highest you can get.
Yes, we don't want to go any further. But I'm glad that it didn't affect that.
I'm thankful that the seniors are going to be able to fight, handle football, build this last year and have a homecoming. So thank you for considering that, that they weren't displaced.
I don't think we can do that. That I think our seniors, whether they're cheer or band or football, deserve a normal fall.
Yes, especially since I've come out of COVID.
Yes.
These seniors were sophomores when the pandemic hit.
My only question would be this, and I'm just going to say it publicly because you know fast 10 million times already.
Two million.
The 2 million probably, the existing scoreboard right now, it's pathetic.
We're getting a new one.
So that would be going up first for this season, or what do we do for this season?
You know, that's a really good question, and I really hadn't thought. If, if we have the revenue, the funds, which if you approve them tonight, we will, and then we decide, the next step that you will decide is what procurement method do you want the district to follow? Do you want to do a buy board, which is really fast and really quick? Do you want to do sealed bid proposals, which take a little longer? Do you want to be, do you want to do what they call design build, where that's a two-step process, where you qualify and then you select? Those conversations will come next month or sooner, but I will, if this is approved tonight, I will reach out to see if we can move on a portion of that, which would be a scoreboard, because not being in the construction business, I don't see why we couldn't.
I was, at least, I mean, we're going to have a home, since we are going to allow the senior home year, I mean, you know, which is great, I mean, which I'm like everyone else, I don't want anybody to miss out on their senior year, but my, my thing is, though, I wouldn't want to invest money in the repairs of this one and then, and then turn around and get the new one and move.
I agree.
You know, because otherwise the extra money's gone and no one gets anything.
That's the same scoreboard I had when I was on the, here. I mean, I'm just going to be honest.
I'll get some information on that.
It's the exact same scoreboard and track.
We'll report back to you right now.
Isn't there a vendor on the buy board that can do this?
I don't know because I have, well, well, hold on. There is a vendor that does everything, which is on the buy board, which I've used in the past. I don't know if there's a vendor on the buy board that just does scoreboards, but I will find out.
But even the one you know, he could probably come through with just that scoreboard first, and he's on the buy board already, that, that would eliminate a lot of time.
It would. Yeah, that would be.
And we might be able to get it for our seniors this year.
Because that, that would be.
I know, I'm definitely on board with you of getting that taken care of for the kids.
And most of the games, I went to all the games, and my first quarter, people would tell you, it looked like a Christmas tree.
Yeah, it did work.
Well, it started, you know.
It was bad with the scoreboard.
I really didn't know what the score was. You guessed.
Can you interfere with the improvements that need to be done?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
And is there moving it? Only they're going to move it to the other side, but it's the only way. But even at that, it's too far away.
But what, what we can do is, I can research it and then figure out what your desire is regarding the procurement, and then if it is a buy board, we can bring the vendor in and we can ask questions that you want answered. And, and someone would, I know my skill set. It's not scoreboard construction, and so we'll get someone that can answer, answer those for you.
Maybe the next meeting?
Yes, yes.
And how about the P A system?
Yeah, the kids.
The P A system is also in the scope of work.
Okay, good.
And that's actually every facility out there that doesn't have a working P A system.
So.
Well, I tell you what, if they could fix the scoreboard and the P A system from the beginning of this year.
Yes.
I mean, that would be great because that would be.
That's huge.
You can't, you can't understand a word they're saying.
I've never been to a football game.
Well, most of the boards are named with the speakers.
I don't even know the name of the stadium. Is it Warrior Stadium?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, that's been one of the things, not only the scoreboard, you know, the 25th square.
It's amazing that as many games as I've coached to not coached a game here, it's bizarre. But I haven't. It hasn't been on our schedule.
Like everybody says, if we can get that scoreboard and the P A system working, that's, that shows the public that.
You're exactly right.
It shows everybody that we're going in the right direction.
We gotta bring T and pride back, and that's going to help.
It's nice when you can understand your, it's nice to understand what they're saying, yeah.
Particularly when it's your kid.
Exactly.
So any other questions, comments, please? Do you have any recommendations?
I do, and it's in red, just like my glasses. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the 5.5 million budget amendment for Tulsa Midway ISD Warrior Stadium and additional athletic improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Is there a motion? Jim made a motion.
The board approved the 5.5 million budget amendment for TMISD Stadium and additional athletic improvements.
And then second. Any other comments, questions?
Let's do it.
Okay, all those in favor, ayes, ahs, opposed?
That's a game changer.
Congratulations, coaches and educators and everybody. Mia, you go get your simulator.
Thank you.
I don't know, I was just saying. If not, I'll try the fastest one for you.
Can I have a class to go with it, please?
What else do you want to add?
A class.
A class. He's standing behind you.
Right behind you.
He was trying to leave.
Best senior year ever.
That's, that's, that shows that we here, now that we've seen, standing watch, what the budget looks like, I mean, you know, I mean, the fund balance in particular, there were several years there that there was an urge of doing a deficit budget there, but some certain things, but this is looking much better, and there's other circumstances and growth and everything, which has made it possible. And this is to let everybody know that we're going to be going in the right direction with everything else that's in the works and everything, especially for our district. And the main thing is our kids and staff, which everybody will be proud to have. Thank you all.
Well, when you're a good steward of your money, you can do good things.
Exactly, very true. Thank you very much. And now we've gone to discuss and consider approval of legal services contract with the firm of J. Cruz and Associates LLC.
Mr. President, members of the board, I've been associated in a professional capacity with Mr. Cruz and his firm for over a decade. He not only is astute with school education law, but what I really take advantage of is it's like we're his only client, which you just don't see that in a large firm. This relationship that I'm asking you to approve tonight is on an at-will basis, meaning that we do not have to use him exclusively, but when I want to use him for particular issues, then you have approved that, which is in our policy for you to do. So I'd like to ask Mr. Cruz to come up and say a few words on, on his behalf.
Sure. Chris, can I get the partner? Yes. So very nice to meet you. My name is Juan Cruz. I am originally from Morello. I have offices in San Antonio as well, and I'm very fortunate, but maybe meet a future associate of my office here tonight.
Impressive, right?
Yes, 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 yes. I'm just going to tell you, and I'm proud to introduce my firm. I can just take it from here. Just real quick, a little bit of background about my firm. First of all, I was a former classroom teacher before I became a school attorney. Come from a family of educators, so I think school law was kind of in my blood. Graduated from U of H Law and then have been practicing school law for 27 years. We at the firm have to be remaining in contact with several legal issues that affect public schools entities across the state and really across the nation altogether. And you see some of them here listed for you. There are hot button issues, and I think now more than ever, in terms of school law, school districts, school boards are on the forefront of the nightly news. So I think for that reason, you got to know what you're doing and be able to kind of talk and counsel clients, whether it's a board or administrators, about what to do and how to handle certain situations. And these are some of the hot topics that we've got are out there, cyber attacks, critical race theory, pulling the books from school libraries, and the new, you know, issues that came with abandonment of employment contracts, which was basically enacted in, in fact, this March of 2022. And what we do is basically provide a lot of legal training, ask the school law firm these other issues, and we're a full-service firm, right? From anything to, from special education to what you talked about a little bit tonight, construction contracts, bidding procedures, you know? And I know that for many school entities, you want to get your projects done as fast as possible. We will try to manage and help you out as best as we can, but always realize that, you know, negotiations can sometimes be protracted depending upon the party that you're negotiating with. We're available. I think COVID has taught us to basically be accessible either in person, by phone, or via video conference. I wish that the open meeting sec would have remained like we had it during the times of COVID, to be able to meet video conference, but those days are somewhat gone. And I think one of the things is that, you know, not only are we available, we are actually, you know. Um, and I think one of the things is that, you know, not only are we, uh, available, we are actually, uh, you know, been doing this for a number of years, uh, had the, a strong relationship with Mr. Van Maitri over at Primont and Career I S D, so are capable of handling issues as they, uh, percolate on a day-to-day basis. The training components are something that we, and right now is really, really heavy with training, especially school safety legal training, that I'm doing one in El Paso one Friday. It's a three-hour session. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be, and I think what I tell people is, listen, prior to all that, what was going on, is that we did have a lot of legislation in 2019 about school safety. But then COVID happened, so all of those things were put to the, to put to the side. Right now, you know, all of these lists that T A has put out, plus a lot of other things that, uh, Chapter 37 provides, we're putting that in front of our clients to say, you gotta take care of it. And we really have a very short, quick timeline to get it done. Um, so communication is obviously, doesn't really matter where we're at anymore, because you have, you know, the World Wide Web at your fingertips through an iPhone or whatever else may be a tablet. This is, uh, our client list, and I put in red basically these school districts around this area that we represent, including Mathis, Primont, Rockstones, Kidmore, Tyne, and Taft I S D. Uh, but as you see, you know, our clients kind of are all over the state of Texas, you know, as far as Midland. Um, and what I'm, uh, very, you know, proud to say is that we are kind of in the forefront of a lot of, uh, decisions with respect to public entities. The first one, uh, that is there for your review is the United Independent Greg Abbott, and that was about, you know, masks. Because as you know, the government took a certain stance that some public bodies did not wanted to enforce masks, so we had to litigate that issue. Um, Hospital 1669 is something that I fought for. I wrote it. I testified twice before the Texas Legislature. And in short, basically cheer complaints, dance complaints, debate issues. Those are important issues, but we are a body of public school districts that should focus on academics. So this law that was passed basically allows school boards to delegate to the administration. Complaints arising out of extracurricular activities will be basically handled by the administration and not take up the board's time. That is permissive, but it is there and something that, uh, you know, quite unfortunately, I had to litigate against a couple of parents that filed 75 extracurricular complaints in one year in one of my school districts, which gave me the kind of, I, I knew that something needed to be changed, so this is what I fought for, and I'm glad that it passed, signed by the governor. Uh, the Harris County appraisal district, that was, we also do work for the Texas Legal Assistance Fund. And we were hired to basically file an amicus brief, which was basically a friendly brief to the court. And that was ruled in favor of the appraisal district, which now the Texas Supreme Court ruled that stored gas is subject to taxation, which is basically more money in, uh, public entities' pockets. And last but not least, is a case that I basically handled and argued before the Texas Supreme Court. I'm over for Clint Independent School District. Um, and long story short, that holding basically says, if you want to sue a public school district in the state of Texas, you have to exhaust your administrative remedies, which is basically DGBA, FNG, or GF Local before you go for further into the courthouse. We personally serve as external governance council for T E A, a position that I am very proud of, because, you know, have been raised in South Texas. I think that that, uh, contract could have been given to any big-time law firm from Dallas, Houston, Tyler, wherever the case may be. Um, and we're fortunate that we've been representing and working with the Governance Division. What we do with the Governance Division is basically when you have a poorly performing school board and T A takes them over, then we counsel the Governance Division on how to go about certain issues that arise in public entities across the state. Registered provided for T A to basically give training to school boards, Open Meetings Act training by the A G's office as well. We're registered for them. We're members of TASB and NSBA Council of School Attorneys. Uh, we represent a number of insurance companies that basically, you know, litigate in favor of school districts across the state of Texas. So our promise is basically to keep our clients' interests first and at the forefront, to make sure that your interests are met, uh, so long as they're, you know, in compliance with the law. And real quick, I'm gonna skip over myself, just, you know, my partner at the law firm is Sonia Garcia. She is also from U of H, born and raised. She, Sonia focuses a lot of student rights and special ed. Lisa Paul has been practicing a year, uh, more than I have. She's an associate attorney. She comes from the Texas A and M system, having worked inside the Texas A and M, uh, General Counsel's Office, and now, uh, part of our law firm as well, has a lot of, uh, contract experience. Uh, Mario Perez is another attorney with our firm that has been practicing basically on general education topics, Texas Tech undergrad and law school. Uh, Rick Benavides, uh, does a lot of special ed and labor and employment law, University of Encarnated Word in St. Mary's. Valeria is from, uh, Laredo as well, but she does, uh, you know, studied at Loyola University, both undergrad and law school. Michelle Barnes in our San Antonio office, with our biggest cases being handled by Michelle. We have been, uh, hired by Taft I S D to represent. We're going to trial. In October, it's been a trial, it was been a case that we've been handling for th- three years. Long story short, the hurricane blew in in 2017, and in 2019, really, the, uh, facilities at Taft I S D are still not the same, if not in worse condition. So, uh, you know, we're, you know, litigating against 15 other attorneys in that case. Andrew's also in our San Antonio office, handles a lot of civil litigation and, uh, business law for us. Um, and Stephanie is in now in Austin, uh, Cornell undergrad and U T Law, and does a lot of open records and special ed in addition to, um, the, um, general contract law as well. So that's kind of, you know, what we have. I did put our contract there. It's a two-page contract, and it's like Mr. Van Maitri stated. It's an at-will. It says basically that if any time either my law firm or this board decides to move in a different direction, uh, under the state bar rules, basically, you cannot have a contract with a lawyer for an extended period of time. Because it's, your, your identity is the same as if you're going through a divorce or personal injury lawsuit. If the attorney's not doing what you would need for him or her to do, then you have the right to be able to get out of that situation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. That's very impressive. Any questions?
Hi, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz, my name is Ben Benavides. I didn't have the pleasure of meeting you. I didn't go to San Antonio.
Yes.
But thank you for the invite.
Very.
Uh, my question is, I pretty much know how the attorneys work, like for the district, right? Protect the district at all costs, whatever. And that's my question. If the district has done something wrong in reference to a parent or a special needs kid or something, would you, um, how would you handle that? Would you tell Mr. Van Maitri, hey, you know what, you guys did it wrong, and we gotta fix the problem? Or would you just say, you know what, we're gonna go to bat and just, you know, make sure that they don't have any claim against the school district or, or, you know?
That's a good question, Mr. Benavides. I think the, one of the chief things for a school attorney is to basically prevent litigation, be proactive. Litigation, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, it's a rich man's sport. It is very expensive to litigate, and if you have not litigated cases, you don't know, uh, what you're, you know, with, a lot of attorneys have never been into, inside a courtroom to be able to say that. I've been inside a courtroom and personally inside a lot of cases, cases are gonna materialize in two or three years. So why do you want to put themselves? Now, mind you, you gotta also be reasonable. So for example, we have a case out of Mathis right now. It's a type of personal injury, excessive force case. Uh, we do think that maybe there's some exposure of liability. On behalf of the school district, we have offered a certain sum of money, but we have six potential plaintiffs, you know, some, some, uh, parents, students, that want very, through their attorney, want a lot more money. What we do is just look at your verdicts around here. You know, if they do go to court, are they going to get this amount of money? Um, we think we're being fair and reasonable, but at the end of the day, the parents also have to meet us. Where, you know, the insurance company also believes is a fair and reasonable settlement. So I think that that's kind of my answer to your question, that, you know, we will do our best to prevent litigation, uh, so long as we're dealing with a reasonable member on the other side, whether it's a parent, student, vendor, employee.
And sometimes they just, the parents just want the school district to sometimes say, hey, we were wrong.
Yeah.
You know, and, and there's been instances of that and, and, uh, but there's some school districts and there's some, uh, attorneys that represent school districts that say, hey, you know what, you know, don't even talk to them, don't even try to fix it, let's just go at them. And, and I don't want that for our district. I don't want that for our community.
Right.
I want attorneys that can come in and tell Mr. Ma- Van Maitri, you know what? Well, you know, whether there's, whether we're in the right or wrong, I want, you know, there to be communication and the attorneys to at least look at a solution before we, we fight the parents, you know?
I mean, a lot of the times, we obviously work with the superintendent, but it's really emanates at the campus. So we talk to the principals and see like, how can we reasonably resolve this? Uh, again, it has to be a meeting of the minds, right? For two people to kind of, whether it's an, a lot of what we do with is, a lot of it is Employment Matters, to be honest. Um, so, but you saw some of those cases that can also emanate from a campus issue.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cruz, I, I do also want to thank you for the invitation to that day, but unfortunately I did not make it. Um, are, are we, I guess in the communication you've had with, uh, Mr. Van Maitri, are you being added on to the other number of lawyers that we have, or are you replacing them?
No, it's an add-on. In order for you to sever the relationship with an attorney, you would have to terminate. You would have to have an agenda item to terminate the other law firms, or I'm not sure whoever you may have. So this is an add-on. It's not a termination of any particular firm.
Would, Mr. Van Maitri, would you, would you know, well, just off the top of your head, how many lawyers, different law firms we have as a district?
I only know of one.
Okay.
We have two.
We have the Beakers for special ed, and then we use Walsh Anderson.
Okay. You have the who for special ed?
The Beakers.
Oh, yeah.
That I know of.
Okay. So we don't use that lady out of Austin anymore?
That's Walsh Anderson.
That's one, okay. So how's it work?
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Van Maitri?
Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the legal services contract with the law firm of J. Cruz and Associates LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitri. I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'm trying to find that, read that. Make that motion, and PMS seconded it. Any other comments, questions?
Can we look into doing a replacement? Or, or the, terminate our, our agreement?
Yes, sir.
With Mr. Guy, with Mr. Guy, with our boss, Guy.
I'll, uh.
Can we address that?
I will, um, visit with the board president, and then if there's, um, you have asked for that. If you can send me that in writing, it'll, it'll be placed as an agenda item.
I'll second that. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? As a post-motion case.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate that, and I, I don't think you'll regret, uh, once you see the professionalism of Juan and, and his team. They're, they're top-notch.
Okay, now, this is the board portion of it. Uh, Debrae from TASB, that's the Associate School Board, Summer Leadership Institute. Who would like to?
If I found my photos, I would love to be first. I took pictures of the screens. I could remember what I wanted to talk about. Um, I was in, my, the, one of the topics that I really, uh, was very, very, uh, interested in had to do with, I realized my lack of knowledge in special ed was probably horrendously low, I found out that day. Um, but I did, I did step into the class, and I did not type in the name of this photo. I'm so sorry. But basically, it was just the, uh, it was the providing of the, of the counseling service for mental health that came in, came in contact with, with these students. Apparently, across the state, um, there's only been like a very, I don't want to use the 0.01% because it's already been used, but, but, you know, it's, it's really low. It's like maybe a half a percent or two. I can't remember what it was. But, um, but there has been very, uh, some, there's been a very lack of, of understanding what our special needs students are, are, their representation on, on mental health has really been. Uh, come to find out that we, even in just in region two, uh, we don't even have enough caseworkers. And that, that was very alarming to me, because, you know, it's, I'm sure it's hard enough to be a parent of a special need student, and then to find out that they have very few avenues to turn to. So I'm assuming it's for Mr. Cruz, who's so busy most of the time, but, but, you know, so I, I thought that that was an interesting fact, that, that, um, it's, it's taken, uh, the education system some time to bridge that gap. But it seems like they've got a plan in effect, and I was really glad to hear that. Because, you know, we need to, we need to represent all of our students as board members. And it was a very, it was a very eye-opening class. I was very surprised, like I said, how little I knew about it after so many years. But, but that's what leadership is for, so I mean, I was glad to sit in on that.
One bad thing about it, Charlie, is that, you know, they don't graduate enough teachers. There's not enough of them which want to go into the special education field, which is sad. There's ones that are qualified for it, and we need more of them. It's just somehow getting it across to them that their services are so vitally needed.
Maybe the sessions indicate there's a shortage of special ed teachers.
Yes, there's a shortage. It's just like of all teachers, but it's a special ed, because I would have known sessions. And it was, they talked about that, and that was one of the things that they brought up, and they don't have it, especially rural communities, which is very unfortunate, because I know when I taught at Bank, Bankhead, they, they had a co-op between all the little schools. I will see Orange Grove, all of them around there, with Bankhead. That's the only way they could do it, because they couldn't, they just couldn't get the special ed people. It's unfortunate. I agree, there's a shortage of them. They'd like to be next.
I'll, I'll speak, uh, I think we all could agree that we're there Friday morning with Dr. Adolf Brown. His motivating, kind of rebooted us for the morning, I believe, but if you're, if you're YouTubers, I challenge you to just go to, to Dr. D.
Well, tagging on to what Jan said, that was probably the highlight of the conference for me. That was, uh, having that man stand up and speak about, um, judging kids, um, just on, on their, on their parents or, or their academics, uh, that we don't know what's in their backpack. We don't know what they're, what's going on in their lives when they, before they come to school and after they leave school. There, there's something going on. We have to try to reach out and get in touch with those students and find out what it is that is really, uh, there in their backpack, as, as, Dr. Brown said. It was a very motivational, um, uh, speech presentation that he did. And I, I encourage you, like Jan said, go on, on YouTube and listen to his, his, um, his presentations. He is very, uh, he's very passionate about, about kids and about, um, finding out what really is happening in the student's life, because we judge them by how they, they appear to us. And that's not necessarily the case in their lives. They just bring themselves with their backpack of whatever's in there, and, um, and they just go with flow. They don't necessarily, um, show what is, it is that they're really dealing with. So I, I do encourage you, like Jan said, go on YouTube and watch this guy. He's, he's phenomenal.
He is. Now, I, I hope I'm not doing this for anybody else, but he had the cornrow dreadlock thing sticking out of his head, had a bad band, this baggy shirt on the backpack, baggy pants. Funny, Stephanie says, "I walked around out here for 20 minutes and nobody said anything to me." And I'm going, okay, but then he told us the story. Where was it? He was in California? Was it San Francisco? And he was supposed to go in to give a speech to a bunch of individuals, a big, some auditorium stadium they had over there. The security and police arrested him, took him. The security and police arrested him, took him, detained him, and took him off into another room to find out, and finally, the person that was sponsoring him had to come get him out, that was just part of the way he looked when he came in. You know, because after he got in further into his, uh, presentation, off came the baggy shirts and pants, and then the off with the hair and everything, he had a suit or something on underneath it, says, "This is, this is," you know, he says, "This is what I looked like when I went to school, but this is what I look like now."
One of the things you said is not where you've been, but it's where you're going, that's right.
It's that backpack, some of them, well, as you said, some of them are very heavy and some of them aren't, he says, but everybody's got one, we all do. Anybody else?
I went to one, um, a little different, um, it was about healthcare and self-funding, and it was Raymondville ISD superintendent, worked his way through self-funding healthcare, zero copay, zero deductible, and, uh, zero premiums. He cut deals with all the local doctors in town, said, "Hey, you see our teachers? I'll pay you, write a check out of the office over there." And, uh, he, he got it, got it done, and, uh, he fought the state, and then the state now has where you can get out of teacher, um, insurance, which y'all, y'all all know what teacher insurance is like.
You can opt out of the TRS.
Yeah, you can get out of TRS, uh, but you still get your teacher retirement insurance, that's a different whole thing, so, but it was very interesting, and, uh, the way he did it was really neat, he, uh, made it sound easy, I don't know.
The whole plan was only $356. And it, the conversation started at a parking lot between a custodian and a bus driver, because they didn't make enough money to even afford health insurance.
Yeah, because a lot of the other non-teachers weren't getting insurance. And even if you have insurance, you go to the doc, you can't, you know, you can't go to the doctor, because you have to pay $5,000 for your deductible. And so, there you go, you don't get anything done. But this was really neat, uh, because the office over there was writing a check directly to the doctors, and, so they got paid quickly, they were happy, so.
And he was, and he also said that he would give classes or something, or tell people how to do it.
He has a website and everything, and he was, he was very helpful with that.
He said he would come give any board over you.
It's something to think about, we can do that this year, we already signed teacher retirement, but just think about that.
Anybody else?
So I went to some different kinds of classes, I went to some leadership classes, some governance classes, and, um, some officer classes, and, um, it was a really good leadership conference, I can say that, I learned a whole lot. I don't know, you can ask Mr. Van Maitre, I was kind of walking around a little hot-headed, very excited about coming home and working hard to get the governance of our board, um, back in shape, um, and we have a lot to do on this board. Um, so anyways, um, we are, um, a team of eight, and, um, I just kind of want to educate the public, because I was educated quite a bit, um, I don't think the public is completely educated on what, um, the job of a board member is, and how, um, they are not a board member when they're by themselves. You have to be in a quorum to have any power at all as a board member, and I think it's real important that the public understands that and knows that, um, you do not have power within the district by yourself. Um, we only employ one individual in the district, we employ no other employees in the district, we only employ a Mr. Van Maitre or whoever sits in that seat, so, um, we're his bosses.
Seven bosses. And I'm fortunate, actually, I have eight bosses.
Yeah, the one at home, right?
Um, board members can't tell employees what to do in the district, we have a superintendent that's in charge, and, um, we are not educators, um, we don't hold certificates for education, so we don't need to be telling you or them or anybody else within the district how to do their job, because you are all educated and certified to do their jobs. So, um, that's another thing, um, that I learned. I learned that all board members should respect each other in open session and closed session, and, um, I will say that, um, the governance of this board has a lot of work to do, um, when it comes to that, and, um, I think it's real important that each person that sits up here, um, needs to remember that we're representing, um, TM ISD, and at that same time, we have people that are watching us as leaders, and it is very important that we are showing them how to be a leader, and, um, that comes with the governance that's the community places for you, and they put you in these seats. Um, I'm almost done.
No.
I'll take too much longer. Um, I think it's real important that you shouldn't run for the board or sit on this board with personal agendas, and especially not any agendas for your own kids, you need to sit here for all kids, not specific organizations, you sit here for all kids, every single kid deserves the same thing. Um, board members don't make promises to people in the public, they can't fulfill those promises unless you're a part of the team of eight. Um, it was a breath of fresh air when I was reminded that TM ISD needs to refocus on success and student outcomes, and not individual adult agendas. And I'm going to sit here and tell you that I'm sick of it, and we're not going to continue forward like that anymore, we are going to take governance classes, we are going to get someone to come in here and help us, the focus has to go back on students and their success and their outcomes. We had approximately 42 board meetings this year. Forty-two, we have 12 months in a year. Do you think that that was all focused on student outcome? Go back and read the agendas, it wasn't, it was adult agendas. And we have to get back together as a team of eight and help this school district move forward.
Oh, I got to call point of order, that was not in San Antonio.
I was, yes, it was.
They didn't say that Tulos, we had 42 board meetings?
I called up here and found out how many board meetings we had, I'm just going to show that the governance has not been under control in this, this boardroom. Um, this re, this conference reiterated how board members should uphold good ethics and follow board operating procedures, so that the business of the school can continue to make TM ISD better. That's what I got out of it, and it was very good governance, and it was very good leadership in how a school board should function.
Is there anyone else? Well, I'll kind of go along with what Kim was saying, because I went to a lot of sessions that dealt with team building, team of eight, board focus and everything, and I, there's one particular thing that I came away from, it is a team of eight, it's the seven board members and the superintendent, that establish the leadership for the district, for it to all go, where it can be going down through the system so that everyone can see it, see the importance of it. But the one thing that I, the biggest part of it was that 75% of board agendas should be student-focused. And in the past, some of ours have not been that 75% of student-focused. And that's one of the things, is part of the governance part that we need to get back to. There was a lot of things that have to be dealt with otherwise, you know, budgets and that, that can, deals with students, everything else, you know, it all has to deal with students, but we have to stay focused on all of the kids, every one of them, from pre-K all the way to the seniors, and everything in between, everything. And all the kids are our main focus. Since I've been on a board, and it has been my main focus, but they brought that up, and I'm going, wow, I started thinking back, saying, 75% student focus? And the other part of it was, is during the, a portion of helping to build that 75% focus was the board agenda items should be tied to district goals. In other words, if it is an agenda item, where does it fall within the goals? No, and that was one of the things that they talked about. It helps to build the governance, because people can see, not only we as board members, but the public can see, that we set these goals, and yet we are going back, we're, we're taking that governance part of it, we're building on those goals. And the thing was, is team building is vital, because I went to one session, and then all these board members from this one particular district, and they were all up there talking about what they've done, where they've been, what they've gone through and everything like that, and one board member, he was sitting up there, you know, you know, I didn't, I came home with the wrong idea, he got changed, now I'm, I'm with the rest of the team, and they all kind of looked at him and laughed, "Yeah, you were kind of tough on us, weren't you?" He says, "I apologize, I had my head in the wrong place." You know, and I'm sitting there going, and he was up there presenting with them, I mean, they were all getting along, and that, that's, that's the way a board needs to be. And it was amazing that they had board functions, social functions, where they all got together and just talked about family, what they did in their life, what was going on, didn't talk about school business, and we were all sitting there listening, I finally asked the question, well, okay, y'all did all these social events, and y'all have people doing different things, and going to different events and everything else, and they come back and y'all talk about it at the board meetings, and says, "Well, I can kind of see what it's doing, but what's your main focus?" It's a team building. We've got to know each other, and what our strengths and weaknesses are, and yet we might have differences of opinions, but we can discuss them like adults, and I'm going, wow.
You can agree to disagree.
Disagree, that's right.
Yeah, agree to disagree.
You can agree to disagree, I've been coming almost a year, and that's why I came here, because I don't see that the board works together for the community. I've been living 12 years here, and I've been trying to help others, I know, I spoke.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I appreciate that, but, no, that would have been a different comment section. But it was all very interesting, like Kim said, it was a very powerful Tasby leadership, you know, because we had one year we didn't have it, and it wasn't a very big one last year, but this year, they had the good speakers, had good presentations, and most of it was much like what it was in Galus, and there was a lot of stuff, it was not only board-focused, but it was getting the board to focus on governance and concentrating on kids and the well-being of kids and everything, which is good.
As you know, we do have Lone Star Governance that's coming up, I'm waiting for a response from TEA that's going to assign us a coach, uh, that will be two days of very intensive training regarding student outcomes. One of the first thing they will ask us is for Ms. Castillo to send them a year's worth of board agendas, and then they will take those board agendas, and they will determine, based on, and I believe it is 75%, you know, how much of your time are we taking that aren't directly related to student outcomes?
Will those board agendas show who called for the special board meeting?
I'm not sure what, uh, documentation we have, other than, um, I've gone through it twice, and as, in, in those districts, um, I was the one that crafted the agenda, and it was embarrassing to me that there were so many agenda items that I had put on the agenda that weren't directly related to student outcomes. It, it was very aha for me. So, a- aside from the annual team of eight training that we will do, we have that coming up, I'm, frankly, I'm surprised I haven't heard anything from the agency, because they did get back with me, uh, fairly quickly, but, um, the agency doesn't work with the speed that I would want, but maybe with Juan working for TEA, he can, he can help that, I don't know.
That training is very needed, and cannot come sooner than, than my perspective.
We're going to do it.
Tasby has theirs as well, that was that Saturday session that we went to, they gave us the wrong code for.
That's right. Well, yeah, they did.
That was all about the stuff legislate, they may have one on their own, Tasby has one that's a governance thing.
I have one more, real quick, Tom. I went to one, the school down in the valley, and they had a couple different schools, they had 24 school board members, so, and somehow they all got along, I don't know. They had them all lined up in the front, they had 17 of them show up there, and it was pretty impressive to see, because it was like three or four different schools that were all under one, uh, can't find the name of the school system, but it was really neat. Yeah, and they said they're the only one in the country that has this many school board members, they're, they're all by themselves in the state of Texas.
Several magnets.
And there's whole school systems and everything, it was interesting, just hearing them all. And, and some, half of them get voted in, and the other half are appointed in, that was weird, appointed by your county judge, that's pretty interesting.
I'm one of those board members, but in Galus, can I start with a rule?
It was crazy.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll move on, discuss and consider approval of positions eligible to receive non-chapter 21 contracts.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have a instructional director of technology and digital learning, that I'm going to be, um, discussing that individual, um, if you approve this, and she does not currently have an educator certificate, but I've worked with her for 20 years. I worked with her in RER, as in a similar position as this, uh, when I went to Centon to be their superintendent, um, she went with me, and she's been there ever since, and now she wants to come, um, to run our technology and instructional digital leadership at Tulos Midway ISD, she's phenomenal. And in order for you to consider her, you have to approve this agenda item.
Would she be replacing someone, or?
We had a retirement.
Because what you were requesting is all this right here, is this what you're?
No, just one, the director of technology.
Just one, just one, okay.
Yes, that is correct. Every time that we update the list, we have to bring it to the board as it is in policy, and we're just simply asking that you consider the addition of that one position, which is the director of technology and digital learning. All of the rest you've already approved.
Yeah, I thought we already had all those.
All of the rest you've already approved, I just bring it to you for an update.
I, I just wanted to make sure, verify that, because, you know.
Just one.
Just one.
Okay, and that's your recommendation?
Yes, well, I have it, um, Ms. Castillo has it in red for me, so let me, let me do this, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the position listed as those who are eligible to receive a non-chapter 21 contract.
Okay, do we have a motion or a miss, thank you, Dan, one second, so, okay. Any comments or questions? Good replacement?
Outstanding, outstanding.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? As a post-motion case, send it through, thank you very much. The board will convene in closed meeting as authorized by Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, for possible discussion regarding duties, responsibilities, and possible sanction of board member, Mr. Ben Benavides. And it is 8:10 PM on the 11th, 3rd, July, 2022, here in session. It's 9:19 PM, April 11, 2022, we're back for an open session again, there is no action to be taken from this closed session item, however, we appreciate you staying around, but we need to go right back into closed session, because we have some positions to hire, so we appreciate you waiting around and everything, but there'll be no action from our last closed session item. Okay, the board will convene in closed meeting as authorized by Texas. Okay, the board will convene a closed meeting as authorized by Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, 551, for possible discussion for the certified personnel, discussing for the non-chapter 21 contracts, Director of Technology in Digital Learning, discussing for the certified administrators, academic peers who are principled, director of curriculum instruction, Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction. It is 9:20 PM, April 11, 2022. 9:44 PM, we are back in open session.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue a contract for the educator probationary, dual probationary educator term, and non-chapter 21 contracts for the 2022-2023 school year as presented on the attached list.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. I'll make the motion. I'll send that. Be in seconds. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion case seven zero.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue a non-chapter 21 contract for the 2022-2023 school year to Ms. Rosario Salinas.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Motion of administrative recommendation, please. Jan?
Be in seconds.
Jan, for a second. For a second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion case seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue an administrator probationary contract for the 2022-2023 school year to Dr. Allison Schram. And Ms. Kenna Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Motion of administrative recommendation, please. Ben and Janie. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the board, this administrator has a contract for the 2022-2023 school year to work on a part-time basis. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve this administrator to work on a full-time basis, Ms. Melanie McLaren.
Thank you, Mr. Van Maitre. Do you have motion administrative recommendation? Ken? Ken, seconds. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion case six one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Mr. Van Maitre, is there any further business?
No, sir.
There is no further business. I entertain a motion to adjourn, please. They tie it again. Everybody, all those in favor? Both hands or one hand? It doesn't make a difference. It is 9:47 PM, April 11, 2022. The statement is adjourned.